Order the work session for Wednesday, September 17th, 2014. Agenda item number one is ordinance number 1808. Text amendment number 235, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20 or 20. Land Development and Subdivision, Article 1, Zoning, Division 9. Exceptions and Supplements to the zoning regulations of the Laurel City Code, providing an effective date. Mr. Brock, is that yours?
That is mine, Mr. President. This is a text amendment for solar arrays. This is a result of an application for a solar array at Patuxent Green Golf Course. The applicant is here. They applied for a solar array currently. There are no provisions for such an array on a non-residential lot. The amendment to the existing code provides for setback requirements, height requirements. It also provides that a plan shall be submitted to the Planning Department for review and Such approval does not indicate compliance with the building or electrical code. That would require a separate review. Those are the only changes to the current regulations. The applicant is here in case you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I'll start with Counselwoman McCrery.
Thank you, Mr. President. One, I applaud you for investigating something like solar panels. I think it's, time is right. I'd like to see the, I'm sure you're going to like to see the energy savings, too. Do you have any projections as to what you're going to see over the years as far as cost versus efficiency?
Should I hear this already?
Yeah, because it's being televised. Make sure that thing's on.
Test. Thank you for the question. For the record, my name is Matthew Tedesco. I'm the land use and zoning attorney representing the applicant in this matter. Before I get to your question, and the answer is yes, we do have projections, and I'm going to have Mr. Ben Peters, who's here from Paradise Energy Solutions LLC, who is the contractor on the project, answer that question. He has all that information in detail, but I'd like to just take the opportunity real quick, if I could, just to thank your staff, particularly, we approached them early on in the process, given the interest in what Patuxent Greens Golf Club was trying to do, and Jack Brock and his staff, and as well as Mr. Manzi, your attorney. We've had numerous conversations and meetings. We had a community work group last Thursday, which went really well. So, we're excited about the project. When we first approached the city, we realized very quickly that there really wasn't legislation in place to permit it, so here we are tonight trying to advance that. So, I just wanted to take that opportunity to just say that it is a collaborative effort. We are working very diligently together with staff. With that, I'll just have Mr. Peters come up and answer the technical question. I have it, but he's probably the one you want to hear from, because he's got that kind of information, as well as more information, which I'm sure some of your colleagues may have, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Peters, from representing Paradise Energy Solutions as the contractor. And I guess your question specifically, again, was how much output or savings, or what was your question specifically?
Well, the savings, but also payback for, you're going to have the cost of the panels, and then how many years out before you think the cost will be realized by the club?
Yeah, so it all depends on the client. This, Patuxent Greens is a client, in this case, they're outright buying the system, so it's not a purchase agreement, it's not being used for anybody else, it's being used by Patuxent. And it highly depends on their financial situation. There's a component of tax credit, there's a component of energy credits there, so it kind of varies. We can't nail something down, but our target payback date would be somewhere around three to five years, depending on Patuxent's financial situation. So, that's, that gives you a ballpark of where it would be at. In other words, at year five, let's say, the system would have been completely paid back of the costs that they put into the project. Anything from there on out would be complete savings for them. Does that answer that question?
If I could just elaborate more on it, I think more to the point, it is based upon their energy usage when the system is in place. It will, it will capture, it'll capture about 50%, 57% roughly, of the golf course and the country clubs' energy usage. So, you know, in rough numbers, over a 30-year period, it's about, you know, it's an over a million dollars worth of savings on energy usage. And it's the system that's been designed, and Ben can elaborate more. These are just some numbers that we put in our justification for staff and for you all to kind of digest. The offset is equivalent to about 178.3 tons of CO2 per year, 4,149 trees, 375.9 barrels of oil per year. The average home in Maryland consumes about 12,000 kilowatts per year, so, and kind of in terms that I can understand.
Right.
It's about 19 houses per year that the system will save as, in energy savings, which is pretty significant. Obviously, there's a cost benefit to the owner, but the system's not inexpensive at the same time, so. It is pretty, it's substantial.
And are there, I've heard something about, and please excuse me if I have the acronym wrong, is there something that, at some point, I believe the mayor was referring to credits, there's something that can be gathered called SRTs that they can actually sell if they've realized as much credit as they can?
Yeah, it's called, in Maryland, it's called SREC, is what we call them, S-R-E-C, Solar Renewable Energy Credits. And it's, it's based on, in basic concepts, it's, utilities themselves are required to have a certain amount of their usage come from, or a certain amount of their energy come from a renewable source. And so, this is kind of a way for, by, when a solar system owner creates 1,000 kilowatt-hours, they have, they take ownership of one SREC. That SREC can be traded on an open market, and eventually through the, basically through a system of brokers, it eventually gets to the utility. The utility themselves buys it. So, in this case, let's say BGE would buy that SREC from Patuxent for every 1,000 kilowatt-hours that their system produced, BGE would buy that at a certain rate, and that obviously speeds their payback up. So, that's, this system is going to produce around, around 250 SRECs, 300 SRECs a year. Those are worth about, in Maryland, right now, on the open market, they're worth about $150, $140, it's kind of going up and down. So, yeah, that is the performance-based incentive that's out there.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both.
Counselwoman Lenz?
I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Counselwoman Nicholas?
I do have a few questions. I thank you for holding the meeting that you had last week. I must be honest with you and say that I've gotten, received quite a few calls, and I do have some not very happy residents. My first question is, will you be holding more public meetings for the residents in that community?
We hadn't anticipated it, but we could, if there was follow-up questions, or, I mean, I'm happy to leave my information, Ben's information, if there's certain residents that has particular questions, we're an open book, I'm happy to respond or meet, we can meet as much as we need to.
Okay. My next question is, being you talk about the renewable sources and these energy credits, these are for residents? Are these for resident, the homeowners there, or?
No, this would, those renewable energy credits would go to whoever the owner of the system is.
Okay.
So, you know, if that is a residence, it goes to the residence, if it is, in this case, Patuxent, it goes to Patuxent.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselwoman Lenz?
Yeah, Mr. President, we just asked one question, you saw it. I have not looked at the design, is this a modular system? In other words, can you replace the cells themselves when you hit that 80% efficiency in the cells sometime in the future? Because these cells are not that efficient right now. They're getting better all the time. But can, in other words, can you come in and overlay what you have there in the infrastructure with a more efficient cell? That's all, it's just a technical question.
Yeah, yes and no. Yes, in that when you put your posts in the ground, you have your, your array that you actually put them on, absolutely, anything can be put back on there. The panels themselves, you wouldn't necessarily resurface or redo. If you would ever get to that point where you'd want to replace panels to expand, you know, extend the life of the system, you would probably replace the whole thing. Replace all of the panels, I should say, not necessarily any of the racking, not any of the wires going back or anything, but the panels themselves, yeah.
Where the cells are.
The whole panel.
Yeah, I understand.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't take the panels apart, right.
No, I understand, so, I understand, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll happen someday, because I know that those things are getting more efficient every year.
Yeah. These, these specific panels have a 25-year warranty on them? Life expectancy is between 30 and 35, give or take, so we, we project about a 25-year.
Okay.
You can't project more than your warranty, obviously, so.
I'll be gone by then. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselwoman. Mayor?
I just want to make a couple comments. First, I want to thank Patuxent for holding the community meeting. They made a commitment to do that, they did it. Probably, you know, under 25 people were there, probably 20, under 20, including others. Some of the residents in the affected area were there. I think this is a good project, I think we need to start planning for the future, this is all part of that, and I think the, Patuxent brought out a good point. This is, with their credits and other things that they're going to put back in the savings, they're going to put money back into their club. If most of you know, golf courses are going out of business, golf courses are getting very tough. They have a lot of things that they use around the clock, I guess, plugging in the carts, a lot of electricity pumps over there, which, you know, with WSSC's help, usually run around the clock. So, it costs them a lot of money, and we've fought hard to make sure that that club stays there, that it stays open to the public, and I think this is a sustainability issue with the club, and I think we recognize that now. The other part of this is, we actually walked out into the field that they're talking about, we shared the setbacks to the community. Most of the townhomes, or the homes are up on a small crest of a hill, you actually come down somewhere the, the field will be, it'll be fenced in, it'll be, you know, it'll make sure that it's buffered properly. I think it's important that the Planning Department, and this will have to go before the commission still?
Yes.
The commission take a look at it, make sure that it's buffer appropriately. But some of the problems that several of the residents brought up was that they look out their windows or their doors, and they're going to see this. They want to see the green space. But that is an area that, as most of you know, we've had opportunity, or had discussions with others, that we're trying to buy that to actually develop it. I think this is a better use, I think it's a safer use, and I think it's a use that will ensure that the club stays around for quite some time, so. But they made that commitment there, and what I think the city needs to make sure that we do is that we buffer it as well as possible without interfering with the sunlight and the other things that they need. It will not go above seven feet, correct? So, the entire system from ground to the top will be seven feet, and they showed some photographs, but I know that it won't make everybody happy, but I think it's a good project, and we should move it forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Counsel, we will be ready to have this on our agenda for the 22nd. Very good. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Agenda item two is consideration of a recommendation for fleet acquisition, four-by-four pickup truck. Good evening, Mr. McCullough.
Good evening, Mr. President, and Councilmembers, and Mayor. Annually, we have put together a fleet replacement program, and in this fleet replacement program, it takes into consideration the age of vehicles, the mileage that's on the vehicles, and we try to replace them on a regular basis, so that we don't have to have a lot of them replaced at one time, or before they, they run out into their useful life and it costs too much to maintain. What we have before you tonight on this, this is the last one of the vehicles, I think, that we'll be replacing this calendar year. We've already approved the replacement of police vehicles. This is a fleet acquisition for one four-by-four pickup truck. This is one that's, that's in Public Works now, it's one that's got well over 100,000 miles on it, it's, it's been well-used, and it will not increase the, the fleet number of vehicles that we have. We will replace this one and, and either replace it by salvaging or selling it back to someone, or some manner like that. The funding for this is, purchase of this vehicle is provided for in the FY15 CIP replacement program, using GOB funds. The cost of this particular vehicle is, it's a Ford F-250, it's $39,975. That includes a, a plow that would be used for snow removal, along with any other earth falling equipment that's associated with the use of this particular four-by-four pickup truck. Prior to assembling the bid package for the purchase of this vehicle, the department contacted several agencies. We found that Apple Ford was awarded the State of Maryland contract for this type of vehicle, and so we're proposing to purchase this by writing a state contract with Apple Ford for, for this particular truck. It is recommended that the mayor and city council award the purchase of this vehicle for a total cost of $39,975.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. We'll start with comments or questions. Counselwoman Nicholas?
Can you tell me, you said it doesn't increase the fleet, so the old vehicle, you sell it, or you salvage it, or what exactly do you do?
We, we typically, if we have more than one, we may bundle them together and, and put them out for bid, or if it, we, if it's in such real bad shape, we may just salvage it. Sometimes we salvage some by selling them just for, for scrap value, and sometimes we're able to use them for parts, but we, we do try to get some kind of money back from these, it goes back to the city, from, from the sale of them of some sort. But to keep them, they start to become very expensive just to maintain, sometimes they're hard to find replacement parts after a certain number of years, and, and after a certain number of miles, they just become constantly in the repair, so that's why we, we try to replace them on a regular basis. But we do try to get whatever salvage value we can out from either selling them or, or scrapping them.
So, if you sold them, let's say, are they sold to someone in the public, or?
Well, what's typically has happened in the past is we've had a contract with one of the local dealers, and we'll put them out to bid, and he's giving us a bid price, and we just sold them, and then he either uses them, I'm not sure exactly how he uses them, but he probably sells them on a wholesale basis to, to an auction dealer, and someone fixes them up and, and uses them for limited use.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselwoman Lenz?
I'm fine with this, Mr. President, thank you.
Counselwoman McCrery?
I'm fine.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
You're welcome.
Agenda item three is ordinance number 18. Yeah, we're good to go? Ordinance number 1811, an ordinance to amend certain project budgets in the FY 2015 through FY 2020 Capital Improvement Program. Good evening, Ms. Taylor.
Good evening. Ordinance 1811 before you is to close out projects for, due to the completion of Mulberry Street, Clubhouse Boulevard, as well as Little Montgomery Street improvements. And it takes those funds and applies them to the Bridge Repairs Project, Street Repairs and Safety Improvements Project, and Cherrywood Improvements. Additionally, because we have been collecting the transit overlay tax in the commercial areas, part of the funds being applied to the Little Montgomery, or, I'm sorry, part of the funds being applied to the Cherrywood improvements are coming from the Cherry Lane improvements. It was funded by general operating budget money, but we're able to apply the transit tax overlay funds to that project. Additionally, this ordinance, on page three at the bottom, the Laurel Bike Way Project, Ms. Kristi Fang in the Department of Public Works made application to the State of Maryland for a grant, and the city was awarded $200,000 grant. This is in addition to the $50,000 grant she earlier received for the engineering portion, so this ordinance brings that funding into that project. On page four, Mr. Lotzky also was, received his application to the State of Maryland for an additional grant for Centennial Park improvements, for $75,000 was awarded to the city. In the Information Technology Project, we're bringing in $21,000 in PEG funding. This is for the conversion from the vendor monitoring of the city facility alarms to the Laurel Police Department. And at the bottom of page four, the recently created Energy Efficiency Improvement Project is being reduced by $95,706, transferring those funds to the Laurel Municipal Center And that's all the items in that ordinance.
Okay. Start with Counselwoman Lenz?
I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Counselwoman Nicholas?
So, I just have one question when I was looking at this. On page three, the Laurel Bike Way, so those funds for this project are solely for Van Duzen, for the Van Duzen area?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Counselwoman McCrery?
More of a question for Mr. Flemian on the lighting. What shook out with the 95,000?
I'm sorry?
The 95,000, the savings on the lighting project?
As far as the lighting for the entire building?
Yeah, that green, the green building on the lighting project?
We are still in that eging of the application process for that. The...
Prices came down, or?
We managed to get the prices down, but not, not as far as we had early, as first anticipated. But we're still working on it, and know that we have received some, some reports from the consultant from Baltimore Gas and Electric Company earlier this week. I have not had a chance to review those yet with staff, but we're still in their vision.
That's all.
I do have one question, Michelle. Can we, on page two at the top, the Cherry Lane Improvement, the 34,700 from transit tax, is that the funds from the special taxing district that, that we created?
Yes.
Okay. So, those funds, because I, I guess I was under the impression until now, that that was solely for use for transit, when we were using all or part of those funds as our contribution to CMRT?
We weren't using them.
We weren't, okay, all right. So...
Right. Those funds were separated into contribution to the public transportation company, as well as transferring it to the CIP for improvements to the infrastructure in the overlay area.
Okay.
So, it's split, the use is split.
So, is this the first time that we've actually used it in that way? I don't recall it coming, it wouldn't have to come before the council, under normal circumstances?
Yeah, it was identified in the CIP for Mulberry Street.
Okay.
It was partially funded, using, at that point, the total sum we had collected of 144,000 for the first few years that we had been collecting it, so it was partially funded.
...for transit as well as pedestrian improvements.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Great. So, Counsel, we're ready to move on this on Monday night? Thank you, Michelle. Agenda item four is consideration of a recommendation to award contract LA 1502 Streets Improvement Project. Welcome back.
Good evening again. Just a couple of general comments, one in response to Valerie's question on the bike way path. The 200,000 is for, of that grant is for construction. A year ago, Ms. Fang had put in a, a grant application and received $50,000 that was used for the design of that particular bike way extension.
Mm-hmm.
And the design included stuff that has to do with some containment walls along stormwater management, and so this 200,000, now that the design's finished, was a follow-on grant, and this will be used to complete the work that was designed previously.
Okay.
The, the second comment is on the, one of the things that we, we do on street projects, we put in, the council approves money for them, which we appreciate, we use that to make the street improvements. Occasionally, there's money left over because the bidding is under what was asked for, and one of the things that Michelle Sailor just did was, she consolidated some of those projects where there's a little bit of money left over, and those then can get closed out completely, and some of that money's used to help fund additional streets. So, what you have before you right now is a city streets improvement project, which will construct and repair concrete curbs, gutters, sidewalks, ADA compliant, pedestrian ramps, driveway aprons, full-depth patching, and paving overlays along Woodruff Court, Lotus Court, Hyson Court, 12th Street, and some on Van Duzen Road within the city. We put this out to competitive bid, we had five, five companies that, that complied with our request, and, and those are listed on the recommendation that you have. The firm that had the lowest, lowest price was MT Laney Company from Eldersburg, Maryland, of $145,735.25. We have used MT Laney in the past for different projects within the city, and they've always done a very good job. We're very pleased with their work, their references are also good, so we're very pleased to be able to go with them. You'll notice they were significantly lower than, than some of the rest of them, the bids actually ranged from 145,700, their low bid, up to 236,000. So, I think we got a good bid from them, they're doing work in the city right now, and we're convinced they'll do a good job for us. So, our recommendation is that we award this, this city streets improvement project to MT Laney Company for their bid price of $145,735.25. Funding for this comes out of the CIP, which covers these, and, and we have enough money in the CIP to cover this, these particular projects.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Counselwoman McCrery, comments, questions?
I'm fine with this.
Counselwoman Lenz?
I'm fine with this.
Counselwoman Nicholas?
Can you tell me, how was this contract advertised?
It was advertised in the Sentinel, which is one of the, one of the newspapers that is considered an official newspaper, plus we also put word out to contractors that are on our bid list, to make sure that everybody that has bid on projects in the past is aware of the work so that they can bid on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough, just a, a quick question, doesn't have any real relevance other than my general information, but where in the city is MT Laney working now?
They're doing work not for the city right now, other than doing some repair work, and they have a, a contract with WSSC, so they're one of WSSC's contractors that are doing some repair work, and they'll be coming in to do some major overlays on parts of the streets eventually that WSSC has kind of torn up throughout the city. As a matter of fact, we're actually trying to coordinate something with WSSC so that we can do a combined overlay, repair and overlay on, on some of the streets where they've done major demolition as part of their sewer replacement. We did this in connection with the work in front of the police station, where we had a joint contract where we paid, paid for part of the street, and WSSC paid for the other part, and we got the whole street paved at one time rather than just the half of the street.
Okay. Great. Counsel, we're ready to move forward. Thank you.
If I could just make one general comment, I would ask your indulgence. The next work session that the council has is scheduled for the first Wednesday in October, and on that particular Wednesday, I will be in Louisville, Kentucky, at the wedding of my grandson, and because of that, this is my last work session, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity that I've had to work with each of you on the, on the council.
You may have a special work session, you'd never know. On the 31st.
Well, if that happens, I'll be there. If it doesn't, then I want to use this opportunity... If it doesn't, then I want to use this opportunity to say thank you for the opportunity of working with all of you, because it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Paul.
It's been great. Thank you.
He ain't going anywhere till the 31st, so, don't worry.
Yeah, we'll save, save all of those. First snow.
We may be able to introduce something to prohibit him from leaving.
Agenda item five is charter resolution number to be determined. A charter resolution to amend Article 600, Registration and Elections of the Charter of the City of Laurel by amending Section 604, Election Equipment, to remove from this section the powers of the election judges, Section 605, Voting Procedures, to clarify early voting, Section 606. County ballots to provide when ballot, paper ballots are to be tallied, Section 608, Certification of Election, to declare the time at which the council must meet, Section 609. Failure to elect runoff elections, to clarify when runoff elections shall be held, adding 610A write-in ballots, providing that write-in ballots shall be allowed and counted, and other non-substantive changes to the aforementioned section. That has to be Bob Manzi.
I just need to do a brief lead-in.
Marty?
Go ahead.
Okay.
As you'll recall, when the, the mayor had our working group down at the Patuckant Greens, one of the tasks was for staff to take a look at the election laws, which, which we have been, have been doing actively for quite some time now. As a result of the November 1st, 2013 general election, we had noticed some issues that we felt needed to be addressed. The committee that was established was made up of myself, council members McCrory and Ricks, Board of Election Supervisors Chairman John Kish, Executive Assistant to the Mayor Lou Ann Crook, and Kimberly Ral, the Clerk of the City Council, along with input from Bob Manzi and Bruce...
Bruce Marcus.
Marcus, who reviewed some of the, the work that we had and answered some of the critical questions that we had on some of the issues. The, the task that we undertook, we basically had charges, and one of those was to enhance the qualifications for candidates, to take a look at recount and recount procedures. Excuse me. And we had some issues during the elections with voice amplification devices. We were asked to take a look at, at that. We were asked to take a look at the requirement for 30 signatures for registered voters. We were to take a look at the, the potential for, or the possibility of extending terms of the council to four years, an increase for, in pay for the mayor and city council, ethics review changes and campaign financial disclosures, and to develop a candidate packet for the council and the mayor. And all those have pretty much been done in draft form, and I would like to extend my appreciation to Kim for doing a, a lion's share of the, of the documentation and editing and keeping me on, on the, the right path. And certainly appreciate the input of Bob Manzi, and we also had Kristi Mills involved in this process as well. So, the collaborative effort, and what you have to consider tonight is basically the, the efforts of the staff and everybody I had previously mentioned are in concurrence with what you're about to look at. Oh, I have, sir.
Okay. Would you repeat that?
Absolutely. Certainly, certainly.
Okay. Council will start with Councilwoman Nicholas for any comments. Oh, Mr. Manzi, your turn here.
Well, if you want me to go through these, I can give you a kind of a precis of what the changes are. Basically, the first page is just changing that the, that the costs and expenses will come out of the operating budget. We did not have anything in there as to where the cost for the election we're coming out of, so we specified the operating budget. On the second page, we removed the word Wednesday and just said no law, no earlier than the 5:00 PM on the day after the election, rather than quoting a day, feeling that that was more reasonable than, than stating the date itself. The third page, we provide that the, that a runoff election that has to be established by the Board of Election Supervisors, which is new, and which date will be no later than 30 days after the date of certification of the election returns. So, that is something new that we hadn't had in there before, but I think it makes sense to have, if we're going to have a runoff election, it should happen quickly, and this now codifies that we do have a very quick runoff election. Write-in ballots, which we did not provide for in our charter, are now being provided for, and it will be, it's provided that you can write in a ballot or, or our voting machines do provide for write-in ballots. So, while we have been counting them when we get them, we now provide for it within the charter.
Actually, Kate, they're both going through that process right now.
Yes, they are. So, those are the changes within this, this charter change.
Which opens it up.
It does.
Which opens the election up for others.
It does, and, and that's all purpose of it. We wanted to, we wanted to parrot some of the things that we saw that had happened in the past two elections, and we wanted to also, we took some comments from Bruce Marcus and some comments that all of us had seen from other communities who had experienced problems, and we wanted to try to open our charter up to, to make it a little more inclusive rather than exclusive. And that's why the changes that you've seen in that section. So, if you want, I'll go through all three of these. There's another charter change, which is the, the next one.
Probably briefly.
Yeah.
Yeah, the next one is...
I think we should touch on it.
The next one basically says you've got to, you've got to live in the ward that you're running in for 365 days instead of just a year. Okay? You've got to continuously reside there before you file.
You can tell which ones the attorney gave us to put in and which ones from the committee?
Yeah. Some, anyway. And that you must remain living in the ward while, from the time you are elected, and remain in the ward while you are elected, remain living in that ward. We, we are going to, now, salary of council members, there's a provision in here that, first of all, the council members will be entitled to the same health benefits as employees while serving on the city council. The same is going to be true for the mayor. That's a change. We're also providing that, now, this language is going to change. There is going to be a provision in here for automatic salary adjustments for the council, but it is going to be that the salary adjustments will be prospective only, and that is that you will get, prospectively councils will get adjustments anytime a COLA is given. Okay? So, if you give the employees a COLA, you will either get the COLA or $500, whichever is less.
Let me, let's make sure we're clear about that back there in the press.
Yeah.
This is not while they're sitting as a mayor and a city council.
That's right. It's the next, for the next, and the next mayor.
Do you get that?
So... Yeah, and their market adjustments or COLAs, whichever, you know, we're calling them market adjustments now. The next mayor may call them COLAs if there is a next mayor, so... Well, that's true. But I'm going to change this language around a little bit from what we show in here, just to make that clear.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment. I, I got this language actually right from the City of Gathersburg Charter when I was reviewing this a while back ago. As you know, the current charter requires a citizen committee to be appointed each year, review of all the expenses and all that, and then there's a, an adjustment. It becomes too, in my view, it becomes too much of a political hot potato, and I just think if we want to continue to have people be involved in government and still receive some type of a stipend, this is the way to do it, and it's a lot better, and it's not with the current council. It'll be sitting in there, it'll be in the charter where it'll be done after a mayor and a council go. And if there's no adjustment before that year, then there is no, no adjustment. The other piece of this that Bob talked about was the benefits package. If you remember, this goes back to actually Rick Wilson and others when they had their committee review of how to get people involved, those things. This goes way back, and we held off on it last time just because of the concerns of what it might cost. But we think we've worked all of that out. We think the language will take care of it, and it gives a mayor and a council an option of getting in or not getting in. And we kind of do that, you know, we're clarifying this now because, you know, you're not an employee, you're an elected official.
And it go, and it does go along with what most other cities and towns do.
And we do that now somewhat, but it's just, we're cleaning that up and making sure...
Yeah, most other cities and towns do allow their elected officials to, to take, take benefits if they, if they wish to, so...
Well, the other thing is, don't forget, they're going to pay for...
Yes, they pay for them.
Yeah. I mean, this is an 80, 20, whatever. They're not getting it free, just like, you know, they'll be considered, you know, just like the employees pay.
And what we've done basically is we've probably, we've removed a lot of your general powers, they're bracketed, because they're really not necessary.
Put it in the mayor's category.
As much as they used to be.
Yeah.
And...
We moved those everyone to the mayor's side, right?
Yeah, that, we moved them to the mayor's side. And then, of course, we've done the same thing with the mayor's salary as we did with yours, and the same thing with the, with the benefits. And then, we've required the oath of office to be the second regular meeting succeeding the election. So, it's the oath of office for, for all, for the council and the mayor will be the second regular meeting succeeding. So, you have one meeting where you're basically lame duck council members.
And a new mayor and council.
And then, the new mayor and council takes over. And that's it for the second charter amendment. And then, you have before you, which was not on the agenda, but there's an ordinance that was prepared, and this one deals, this one is probably more, of more interest to the council. What we've done is we've changed a lot of Section 611 with regard to offenses. We've, as you know, the code and the charter have adopted the state law with regard to offenses for violation of election laws. Well, we now have added to it that if you are in violation of any law which is not punishable by either the, by the state law, that we will consider an offense, not covered by either one of A and B, to be deemed a municipal infraction, and then it would be subject to a municipal infraction and fine. So, that means that any of these changes that we've made, especially by this ordinance that would not necessarily be covered by state law, if you violated any of the, of the changes that we're making here, you could be found guilty of a, of a municipal infraction, and there would be, there would be a fine involved.
Which is kind of how it's done now.
Yeah.
If it doesn't fall under state law.
Exactly.
It becomes, you're just clarifying.
Right. And what we've had, we've had some problem because we've had some violations for which there have not been penalties, because they don't fall under state law, and we didn't have anything under our local law that would allow us to do anything more than to fine somebody for a limited period of time. And I think it was, what was it, Kim, a certain number of days, and then after that, we couldn't find them any longer. And that didn't make any sense. Yeah, it was 10 days, and couldn't find them any longer. And that doesn't make any sense for not filing reports.
Well, that, that, that was going to be my question.
Yeah.
When you have candidates who don't file...
We've changed that in here, so, and I'll get to that in a minute. But that's primarily why we put this municipal infraction in there, because I think we have to put some teeth in our laws to make sure that everybody is complying with the law and that we get these disclosures, because the public has a right to know. We have, we have said that the, we've changed, we heard the complaint by the council that filing your election report three days after the election was too soon because a lot of you didn't have your final numbers in. So, what we've done in, on the second page is we've said the final report is due, due to the office of the clerk of the council, no later than 5:00 PM on the fourth Monday following the election. That should give you plenty of time to have all of your figures in, and I think that's a fair, fair amount of time to get it done. So, that's a, I think that's a good change.
It's really about bills that people may still have out there.
Exactly. And, and I think that that, that gives you time to clear up bills, to make sure you've got, if you have to have a fundraiser after you're elected to clear up your bills, you'll have time to do that, and you'll still be able to get your report in on time. So, I think we all collectively on the committee agreed that that was a fair amount of time to do it. And by, by giving a date certain, we kept, we were playing with trying to pick a date, and then we all figured, well, let's just do a day, and we figured fourth Monday after the election was a, a good time to, to pick. So, gave, gave everybody pretty much a month, so. Campaign contributions, we changed it around a little bit. If, if you get one from an unknown person, you know, you've been giving them to charitable, now we're saying if you get an unknown source, within seven days of receipt of such contributions, they'll, they shall be donated to a charity.
Is that the candidate's choice?
Yeah.
In terms of the charity?
Yes.
Okay.
Within the city limits.
Within the city limits, that's all.
Does it say that?
Yes. And that's not new language, that was in there.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So, we just ask that you keep that in mind. On, on the next page, on top, we have included in the reporting requirements, in-kind contributions must be included on campaign contribution and dispersment reports. So, in-kind contributions need to be reported. We, we had not...
Really?
We did not have a law that covered that. Our law did not cover in-kind. It was not clear.
Yeah, but they've been included.
Oh, I know. Everybody, I think everybody has included them, but when we looked at the law...
It wasn't there.
It was not there. So, we decided it, it needed to be there to make it clear to everybody that you have to include in-kind contributions.
And, and put a dollar value to it, presumably.
Exactly. Exactly. And in fact, we, later on in this document, we define in-kind contributions, so it makes it less, less of a hassle. We have gone and we, we talk about, we made some minor modifications to the, to the certificates of nomination with, with regard to what you have to have, but it's really nothing, nothing more than what you're used to. It's just that the Board of Election Supervisors now will meet on the first Monday in October to accept the required documentation for nomination to run for elected office, and they will basically determine at that meeting whether everything is, has been, first of all, the clerk will determine, because she'll, she'll screen everything ahead of time, but the board will also take a look at it, and they'll determine at that time whether they agree with everything as they have before.
We plan too to have, as the documents are submitted, the board will come in and meet as needed to review the packets. If we get a lot of them submitted, they'll come in as needed to, to meet and review the packets.
And we're going to try to recommend to all candidates that they file earlier if they can, so that we can get a chance to review these packets to make sure that everybody is, is complying, so that we don't have problems like we had last time with somebody with a, with a signature that turned out to be fine but just had the wrong address, or I think we needed date of birth, but we've changed, we've changed some of the forms around, I think, that'll, that'll remove that. I think, that'll, that'll remove that. We've also added a recount procedure. We now have a mandatory and permissive recount procedure, which we've never had before. The mandatory recount procedure will come into play if the number of votes between the two highest candidates for mayor or council member at large is less than 3% of the total number of votes cast. Additionally, the, it will be the same for ward candidates if it's 3% of the votes cast for a council member in such ward. So that will be a mandatory recount. As you know, with the machines and with the, the small number of paper and absentee ballots, a recount is not that difficult for us to perform. We probably can do it the same night that we do the, the paper ballots, so we can probably perform the recount almost, almost immediately. Permissive recount, that's on the written request of a candidate. And the written request must be made by petition filed with the chairman of the board within 24 hours of the election. And the burden of proof is on them, they have to make a deposit of $1,000 with respect to mayoral and $500 with regard to a ward candidate. And it's in the sole and absolute discretion of the board as to determine whether to conduct a recount or not. So it's totally up to them as to whether the recount is warranted or not. And again, it will depend a lot on what the spread is, whether there has been a recount, as you know, and whether there's any, you know, whoever it is, they're going to have a burden of proof and we'll have a, you know, we'll have an attorney sitting with the board, whether it be me or whether it be Bruce Marcus, it depends on the circumstances. And, you know, that, that attorney will be giving advice to the board as to whether they should or should not grant a recount. And lastly, the major change is, again, a determination, a definition of in-kind contribution, which is the best definition we could come up with. We took it from a number of different places. And I think it, I think it covers, covers pretty well. But I don't think this council has any problem with that, because I, looking at what you all filed, you guys didn't have any problem with in-kind contributions. You made that. And then the last part of it is just, we made it clear that we didn't want any signs or election hearing happening on city-owned property. And we provided for violations if, if that took place. So we didn't totally revamp the process. What we did is tried to fine tune the process a little bit. I'd ask that you take some time and look these over. Ignore the comments in the, the margin, those are my partner's comments when she and I were working on these. I will have cleaner copies for you for Monday. This, this is not, this is not something that you, you know, you're on any absolute time limit to, to pass, so if, you know, if you want to take it to more than a couple meetings, it's, it's no big deal. You know, this is really your law, so, you know, take your time, make sure you understand it. If you have any questions, comments, changes that you might want to see made, you know, we're not, the committee certainly doesn't take sole pride of authorship, you know, there may be something that we missed in here that you all think is important, so. And I'll be happy to answer any questions I can, so.
Well, I thank you for your time.
I'll thank the committee. This is a lot of work by a lot of people, so.
Right, thank you for that, I appreciate it. You've been very detailed and.
And Kim especially did a lot of work putting it together for us, so.
Thank everybody who was involved, I appreciate that.
We killed a lot of trees.
I'm sure.
We did, Kim did.
Yeah, Kim did a great job. Yeah, she did, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Nicholas, any comments, questions?
You've pretty much covered, I'd like to just have some time to take it home again and digest it with the new submitted, submitted.
Right.
When I've read the old one, but I'd like to just compare it.
Right.
Okay, Councilman Les?
I'll get a clean copy, I can read it at work on Monday.
Right.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McCrery?
Sam.
And I'll ditto. So we are, we're okay then to introduce this on Monday and then as need be.
As long as we have a clean copy.
Yeah.
You'll have a clean copy by Monday, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. That takes care of five and six.
I think it adds one more thing to that process. We, we were asked to look at the, the use of handheld and voice amplification devices. And basically what we determined in this process is that current laws, regulations, legislation that are on the books will enable us to address this through any one of the election judges, as long as they make a determination that there's a public nuisance going on, we can enforce the, the public nuisance law and have the, the individual or individuals cease and desist. And also, under certain circumstances, it could be considered voter intimidation and we obviously have the laws to address that as well, so.
Okay. I, I do have one, one question as you were going through. Bob, any candidate that feels he or she is either being penalized improperly, what recourse does any of this address for that process?
Well, obviously, the, the first avenue for any candidate should be the Board of Election Supervisors. That's what they're there for. You know, a written complaint to the Board of Election Supervisors is the first thing that should happen. That's what the board's there for. We have, we have, over the past two years, we have given the board much more power than it had before by changing around their formatting and, and the powers that they have. We have a good board, they're not afraid, they're certainly not afraid to exert their power. They've, they've done it, as you guys have seen on, on election days. I think they've, they've kept control of the polling places as best they can. I know there's been some problems outside the polling places, but, you know, we don't want to see any intimidation, but the first thing, if it was outside a polling place or something like that, you go in and complain to the chief judge and then the chief judge will go out there and that's, that's the first, that's the first step. If it's before the election, then it should be a written complaint to the Board of Election Supervisors. They will then call the parties in and they will, they will actually have a hearing.
What I'm, yeah, what I'm mostly interested in is prior to the election. Any filing dates?
Complaints can be filed with the Board of Election Supervisors. The Board of Election Supervisors have the power to require candidates to come in for hearings on complaints.
The board has, it's spelled out in their procedures how they address complaints.
Excellent, okay. So as long as the candidates understand what, what, where they have, what they, options they have, for example, if they feel that they are being unfairly treated or, you know, that sort of thing, as it relates to anything.
Right.
Regarding the election, there's signs or anything of that nature.
Right. Well, signs, as you know, is a, is a constant and consistent problem in every election, no matter what candidate or what office you're running for. And that is that signs disappear, signs are defaced, signs, you know, it happens. It is a difficult thing for boards of elections in every county, city, state, dealing with signs, unless, but again, that does, that should not keep a candidate from, if they believe or have evidence that another candidate is, is doing something, they should file the complaint and that would be enough to get the board involved. And the board is not at all, you know, my, my meetings with the board, they're not, they aren't antsy about calling somebody in on the rug, you know, and, you know, they'll do what they have to do. And they have the power to fine, they have the power to, you know, I think after, after a certain point, they probably cannot remove them from the, from the ballot unless they do something like, you know, commit a crime, but, you know, if they do commit a crime, I believe they do have the right to remove, remove them from the ballot, so.
All right. I'll acknowledge that Councilman Ricks has joined us. Councilman Ricks, we've been discussing agendas, items five and six. Before we move on, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to have any comments.
I apologize, I thought that the six o'clock was for the next meeting, it was not this meeting. So it's my fault.
Any comments before we move on? Okay. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven. Ordinance number TBD, an ordinance to amend Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations, Articles 13 Development Construction Division One Development Construction Requirements Generally to Comply with the Annotated Code of Maryland Environmental Article Title Four Subtitle One Providing an Effective Date. Mr. Rock?
Mr. President, this past spring, Maryland Department of Environment conducted an audit of the city construction, erosion and sedimentation process. They spent two days with our inspectors conducting field inspections and following how they did those inspections. They also reviewed the city code concerning development construction requirements. They came back with the, the attached recommended changes to the city code that would be needed in order to bring it into compliance with this current Maryland environmental article. The first one is just a addition to the definition of clear, as in clearing a lot. The second change is an exemption. Presently, single-family residents or an accessory building on a lot of two acres or greater are exempt, that would be removed and no longer exempt. Under minor plan changes, currently, if you increase the size of a sedimentation control feature, you add an earthen dam, you added a trap device, or if you went beyond the approved limits of disturbance, those were considered field changes, those will no longer be considered field changes and will require an amendment to the approved plan. And those concludes the recommended changes by MDE.
Thank you, Ms. Rock. We'll start with comments, questions from Councilwoman Nicholas.
I don't have any questions.
Councilman Les?
Jack, what I don't understand is, especially this last one. We build things, then we have to go back and modify the original plans because it says built. That includes clearing the ground. I mean, this incidental disturbance beyond approved limits and disturbances that are immediately stapled, do you say they've, they've got to get approval of that before they do that?
Yes.
I mean, that doesn't even make any sense. You've got people mobilized, bulldozers and backhoes and it just, time is money here.
Usually, all that is, all that is required is a telephone call to their office in Baltimore.
Okay, I want to make sure.
And they'll give authorization over the phone and then the paperwork.
I want to make sure, Marty, because in fact, this is what drives the cost of construction up. When you get these rules that, I mean, in Baltimore, you just said it, Marty, in Baltimore, now we've got to, everybody's got to sit there with their thumb somewhere waiting for the guy to come down and take a look and so they can initial something on a plan. I, I don't understand some of these rules changes, believe me. But this one just jumped out at me when I looked at it. Because I know what happens when you, you've got 15 people out there working on a property trying to get the thing going and geez, the silk fence supposed to go there. But you got over there and it just didn't make any sense, so you move 10 feet out and now you, you clear the ground there because you had a big hump, the big stone in there, a big rock or something. Just doesn't make sense, but I appreciate that, Marty.
From all of our inspectors, our green card certified.
Right.
MDE and through that training process, they, they basically learn the ins and outs of, of how the MDE does things.
Right.
They understand that, that in the building profession, time is money.
Okay, feels good, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. President. That's the only, the only concern I had with this.
Councilman Ricks?
I will comment to the, and echo some of what Mr. Les is saying in that I just had some landscaping done in the early part of the summer and they had to come out and mark all the electrical and the water and drainage and all the other amenities that go into my home before the landscaping could be done. And I thought that to be a little exorbitant. So I, I see what he's talking about and I understand what Marty's saying too, or Mr. Fleming, excuse me, but nevertheless, I, I do get the concept of why we have to do this, so. I'm kind of talking out of both sides of my mouth. I've got one side and then I've got the other, which is my responsibility on behalf of the city, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCrery?
No comment.
Counsel, are we ready to have this on our agenda for introduction on the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Youth Services Commission. Is that yours, Ms. Mills?
As a result of the Boys and Girls Club Task Force that was created, one of the recommendations that was provided to the Mayor and City Council to consider was to establish a Youth Services Commission that would function very similarly to the Emergency Services Commission. And this resolution intends to, to do that. It is a, it'll be a seven-member commission with staggered appointments at first, sets out the duties of the chair, the meetings, the duties of the commission, and the funding will come from the annual operating budget and how that funding is to be used for grant Youth groups will be eligible to apply for, for this funding.
So this is laid out pretty much as we've talked, as was part of the recommendations from the task force.
We've talked about it in general terms before. When passed, this will allow the mayor to start forming the commission, present names to the council for consideration and confirmation and will allow us to place funding in the FY16 budget.
Very good. Okay, counsel, questions, comments, starting with Councilman Ricks?
No comments on the legislation, but I would like to be listed as a sponsor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Les.
Mr. President, I'm fine with this and I think as we considered the recommendation of the committee that met and made this recommendation, I would suggest that perhaps all the council members would want to sponsor this legislation.
Yes.
I agree. Councilwoman McCrery?
No comments.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
Just one question. Was there, or has there been any discussion about maybe adding something for like a mentoring program on the commission?
That would not be a duty of the Services Commission, but it's certainly something that they can promote and support should an application be presented to them.
Okay.
There's a wide variety, some of the resolution did not just recognize sports, but other programs that are available to young people, such as mentoring.
Thank you.
So that we're, we're clear and I, any, you know, the public also who may be watching this, that this is structured similar to the fire service, emergency service, thank you, the Emergency Services Commission, that sort of takes a look at the funding needs of a variety of different youth-related organizations and then makes determinations on how funding should be appropriated.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. So counsel, we're ready to. So, Counsel, we're ready to move forward with this on the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay. And. Agenda item nine is ordinance number 1809, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Hello again.
Hello again. This is the final ordinance for FY 14. This is the sixth amendment that's been placed before you, trying to address changes and needs based on the economy, weather-related issues. Throughout the wherethes, I tried to relate to you specifically what the changes reflect for Parks and Recreation Maintenance, additional repairs and utility costs at the various city facilities. Changes in DP, or sorry, Department of Public Works. There were some assignment changes that necessitated transferring funds between the various department budgets. As you're aware, Public Works has 10 departments or sub-departments and Parks and Recreation has 20 between the maintenance side and the program side. We're also required to reflect any use of the seized currency that's been awarded to the Laurel Police Department. There were additional red light camera ticket revenues with corresponding expenditures for the processing fees. For the budgeting of the transit overlay tax for FY 14, not all of those taxes have been collected to, as of June 30th. So that budget and its corresponding expenditures were being decreased. However, obviously, there was enough to cover the $34,000 in the ordinance 1811 for Cherry Lane. Personal property tax collections were reduced as well as a technical adjustment that needed to be made for our participation in the 2007 Local Government Infrastructure Financing Program where we hadn't already recorded the issuance fees, but those were offsetting measures. There was a, a revenue and a corresponding expenditure in the debt service budget. So those had no net effect on the city budget. So the overall result is an increase in the budget of $51,830 for a total budget of $31,259,520.
Very good. Thank you. Questions? Councilwoman McCrery? Councilman Ricks?
No comment.
Councilman Les?
Yeah, let me, this is sort of a side question, it's related to what I see here. I don't know, Christie might answer this or, we got any afforestation funds coming from development going on in the city right now?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just say this. I know Mike, you lost some money in trees. We've got a terrible problem with dead trees on Main Street. And the question is, can we use those funds to, to replace those trees?
Yes.
Okay. I think we need to take a hard look at it. There's about 30 trees that are dead or dying. And that includes two in front of the bank. They've got to go. Those are just, they're, they're, I don't, they wanted to keep because they were big, but they're just going. But it was commented to me by a citizen. I mean, I sort of notice it every day, but you don't pay attention. And then I took a good look. There's about 30 trees. So if we can use some of those funds to augment the operating budget for this year to replace those trees, I think it might be a good move. It's the only question I had. It was sort of a side question, not related to this budget.
We can just only take a look at it and we'll see if we can get opinion of the forester, whoever we deal with, and see if we can, if we can't make this planting, planting season, I'm sure we can make the spring.
Those trees considered in the public right of way on Main Street, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah. I think that's, that may be the, the hook so that you can take that afforestation, reforestation money and put it toward that.
To expand what Ms. Mills said, Ed and I is Hallmard from Paul Shop is, he's in the process of purchasing trees and seeing if they will be replaced right in Main Street.
All right. Good. Excellent. The two big, the two big ones have got to go in front of the bank.
Yeah.
They're kind of, they're nasty looking now. That's what the citizen told me. What do I know? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Les.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think in that same resolve, I think the trees in front of Oliver's, I think at 313 Main Street, no, not 313, 6.
513.
713. I think that those trees need to be looked at too. I think that they're putting down some kind of a spring blooming type of thing that stains floors and that sort of thing. So I'd ask that the administration take a look at that as well and see if there's something they can do about that. And also, some of the other trees, should we be reporting trees that are dead and need to be, or is the administration picking up on that themselves or is that just part of our app that we should be doing?
Tree in the public right of way, that would be to look at by all means.
What about in people's yards though? I mean, are we going to be notifying them to take care of those?
Obviously, we don't have the same concerns we do for tree trees, but if a tree appears to be in imminent condition of collapse, falling down on somebody's house, fence, something, it's, it's still an issue for the property owner, but we will send a letter.
What about the Maryland State Highways Commission? Is that anything that's, that we can do about that in the way of beautification?
Well, we can talk to them. They did do a project about four or five years ago that they were patting themselves on the back about, but I think much of that's died off. And I would like to say.
Literally.
The trees that are in the public right of way come under the jurisdiction of the environment. So before we do anything, we have to solicit their advice and a permit. So if they tell us that a tree knocked down, we'll just knock it down.
Well, I understand how that works, but nevertheless, I'm thinking about the beautification of the city. And I know we talked about the grass cutting and that sort of thing where they wouldn't do something. But as you come into Laurel, in, in that area where they were doing construction at 198 and Route, Route 1 northbound, there are two big trees that have died off in there. And so if we could just take note of it and see if we can, if you want me to, I'll take some pictures and give them to you so you can go send a letter or whatever.
Pictures will be great.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
No questions. Thank you.
I, I have a question. Either Michelle of the U or perhaps the chief. In terms of the seized currency. And just refresh my memory, maybe it's just I'm a year older and I'm forgetting. Is it reported, while it's reported, the seized currency used, is it reported anywhere seized currency that is actually seized at, at some point in, kind of on hand?
We, we maintain four separate bank accounts for this money. One account is strictly the money that's come in waiting for adjudication. The other is federal-related case money. The other is state-related case money. Those two being, having been through the court process and the city has been awarded custodianship of that money and the use of it for undercover and investigative equipment that they can purchase. The fourth is a checking account for that money, for certain purchases that they can make.
Sometimes it has to be returned if they're innocent.
And we do. We, we issue a city, we transfer money to the city's account and issue a city check so that nobody has one of the special checks.
In time. That, that one's not as quickly forthcoming as.
I think it's important for, I assume we're on television tonight. It's important for the public to know that some funds are shared. They're multi-jurisdictional. So even though a forfeiture order is rendered, when it's been adjudicated, then all come the city. Some might go to the county or the state or whatever, the feds. I don't remember exactly how that worked, but I remember somewhere in the past, we talked about that. And the, those, are those interest-bearing accounts? No.
Yes.
They are, even though it's pending?
Yes.
Do we have to give the interest back to the individual if in fact it does, is not forfeited?
No.
Okay. We keep the interest. We have to give them the principal back if in fact they find it behalf of the individual?
Correct.
Okay. So we just need to remember that all that money, you might read that it seized this big amount of money, but it may be other jurisdictions are involved in that too. I think that's important.
Yeah.
It's not a big pot of money like it used to be.
That concludes our agenda. Is there any other business? Mr. McCullough?
Just one general comment about the trees. Public Works does keep a list of trees that need to be replaced throughout the year. We have two times of the year, we plant trees, it's in fall and most of the spring. And we're limited right now by the budget that we have in our, in our operating budget. So if you want to give us more money, we'll, we'll reduce the number of trees on our list.
Paul, that's why I mentioned that fund. Because I know that we're, you know, we're, we've got these two times of the year we've got to work with.
But we're getting ready to do it right now, so if there's more money available.
Christie, you, Bob, have a minute.
All right. Our meeting on the 22nd will be held in our newly renovated, remodeled and refurbished chambers. If any of the council hasn't had an opportunity to look at the finished product, I'd encourage you to stop in and take a look. Thank you.